Board of School Directors Action Meeting, Quarter. This meeting is being recorded on SATV, Comcast 28, Verizon Channel 46. Recording Board Meetings also be viewed on Saturday Night Podcasts. Mr. Taylor?
So I'm gonna read the, uh, Notice of the Special Meeting. On December, on November 24th, the following contact was shared with the members of the Board of School Directors. The Satterton Area School District Board of School Directors will hold a special board action meeting on Wednesday, November 26th, 2025, beginning at 12:00 PM. The meeting will be held in the Tinner Boardroom at the District Administrative Office, Building 760 Lower Road, Satterton, PA. The purpose of this meeting is to accept the resignation of an existing board member and fill the vacant seat on the Board of School Directors. No other business will be transacted at this meeting. The previously scheduled board reorganization meeting will still occur on Monday, December 1st, 2025, at 6:30 PM.
Thank you, Mr. Taylor. Uh, meeting protocol, uh, many of you have signed up. Uh, you get your three minutes to speak. Please, please, um, be cognizant of that fact, uh, that you have the three minutes and respect everyone. Uh, there's a lot of people in this room and, um, please just be respectful of one another. I'd like us to rise and say the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Nelson, can you please ask the speakers to turn up? Well, my, uh, switch right up. It is a little bit.
They're doing it, um, they went like this to me, so.
Cool, thank you.
Uh, roll call, Mr. Taylor.
Mr. Barnes.
Here.
Mr. Braccio. Mr. Brong. Ms. Flizak.
President.
Mr. Formica.
Here.
Mr. Keith. Mr. Landis.
Here.
Mr. Nelson.
Here.
Ms. Wheeler.
Here.
And we have a quorum.
I, I just wanna provide some clarification as to Dr. Gallagher's absence today. He was informed that this special board meeting was being held, but due to a previously scheduled out-of-town commitment, he could not be here today. Thank you.
All right, first for public comment, we have John Waldenberger on the resignation and appointment.
Please be respectful, there's a lot of people in here, let the curtain speak. Thank you.
Thank you, um, thank you, hello? This one, hello? Okay, um, so, I basically did want to just reiterate, I think, uh, something that everyone here, uh, also agrees with. Uh, an appointment really should not be happening less than a week when, before the new board takes hold. I believe the newly duly-elected board members should have input on who will be sitting with them for the next two years. That being said, uh, as you will see, uh, at your seats, I placed a resume in mine. I would like to be one of the community members that are considered for the vacancy that you will be appointing today. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them while I have my two minutes. If not, I could take them later when you are at that portion of the agenda. Thank you.
Aaron Tinevor on the appointment.
Aaron Tinevor, Lower Salford. Mr. Nelson, why am I here the day before Thanksgiving? Is there an emergency? No, there's not. Just the usual shenanigans that we've come to expect from the merry band of children on the stage. All of us, even you, have better things to do today. My son came home from college yesterday, I have family visiting from out of town, and I have a lot of people to feed tonight. Shame on you for calling us all here to fill a vacancy following a process that per usual involves no public interviews and no public deliberation. You already know who you are appointing because you discussed it behind closed doors. I said it last week and I will say it again, stop acting like children, grow up, postpone the appointment until after the new board members are sworn in.
Alex Whisser, Upper Salford Township. As I've stated many times over the past few months, transparency is not a buzzword. It isn't doing the bare legal minimum. It means being open to public scrutiny. We are literally standing here in the middle of the day, the day before Thanksgiving, and have no idea who will become the newest school board director. This is the farthest you can get from transparency. This entire situation shows that the board has lost its focus on the students. By not allowing a fair appointment process, you are missing out on interested and potentially qualified director candidates. All of these political maneuvers are distractions that prevent the board from being effective and student-focused. I'm asking this board to table these resignations and appointments until after the reorganization meeting on December 1st. And starting Monday, I plan to lead this district forward towards a more transparent, student-focused, and community-centered future. Thank you.
Good afternoon, Rosemary Budikoffer, I live in Satterton Borough. Mr. Nelson, I listened to the recording of the November 20th meeting again, and I paid special attention to your farewell remarks to the community. You said, quote, "We all have a lot to be thankful for, even when garbage goes on. Just remember, this community is based on love, and when hatred comes out, love needs to overrule it," end quote. If you love this community, then why have you created a situation where an extremely impactful vote is being held with only two days' notice? Today, this community is focused on family, travel, cooking, and Thanksgiving. The timing of this meeting could not be more inconvenient and inaccessible. The school code permits the board, not you, not me, the board, as a collective representative of the Satterton School District community, 30 days to fill this seat. Thirty days. Choosing to rush this appointment is garbage. You will gain no advantage. The makeup of the board will not change. Many do not like the politics of school boards, but let's be blunt, you are going to appoint another Republican, and the balance of the board next week will remain five to four. Rushing this is a garbage decision, intended as a final flex of power, causing great agitation and angering a great many people in our community. There is no reason to vote on this appointment today. You are choosing to do it and upsetting a lot of people in the process the day before Thanksgiving. If you love this community, don't hurt it with needless division. You are gaining nothing today but ill will.
Thank you.
I'm trying, thank you.
Corinne DeJezo, Upper Salford. At the board meeting on September 29th, 2005, Heidi Johnson announced her resignation, and then-President Richard Swartley said that the board would be filling the vacancy by appointment. There were three applicants who came forward, Barbara May, Stephen Nelson, and Tracy Cole. Interviews were conducted at the November 10th meeting, and ultimately, Mrs. Cole, who was running that year but did not win a seat, was appointed to fill Ms. Johnson's vacancy. Sharon Gerhart resigned at the May 25th, 2006 board meeting. Two weeks later, seven candidates were interviewed. Paul Baumgartner, Nicholas Braccio, Jonathan Garnier, Carrie Hall, Dennis Hassang, Douglas Killall, and Stephen Nelson, who interviewed at actually 10:17 PM. The vote took place at June, at the June 22nd meeting, and Baumgartner was appointed. At the meeting on September 24th, 2009, the resignation of Eric McDougall was announced. Public interviews were conducted on October 7th, and the vote occurred at the next meeting. Six individuals stepped forward that time, Andrew Bachman, Barry Bommeler, Ken Keith, Arnold Roddenbush, Donna Schurin, and David Spouse. Ken Keith was appointed with six votes. Fast forward to the meeting on December 5th, 2018, Scott Jelensky announced his resignation. Then-President Ken Keith appointed Mr. Jelensky's replacement, Courtney Barbieri, just 15 days later as part of the Consent Action Agenda items. No interviews, no public process. Ken Keith read a prepared statement from Donna Schurin announcing her resignation at the board meeting on May 25th, 2023. The board announced its intention to fill the vacancy by appointing someone who was already running in the election. A special meeting was held the following month, and all board members present at that meeting, save for Mr. Landis, voted to appoint Mr. Formica. When I look back at the board's actions over the years, I realize that character used to count. Since the current group has taken hold of our school board, it is anything but. I urge you to delay this appointment until those of us who will be sworn in on Monday are given the chance to take our seats and work together with the existing board members to interview and select the best possible candidate to, to fill the remaining two years of Mr. Braccio's term in an open and transparent manner. The board has done it before and can do it again. Show your work and show the community that you are willing to work together with the newly-elected instead of against us. Make character count again.
Thank you, Paul DeJezo, Upper Salford. From the Merriam-Webster Dictionary, the word "character" is a noun. One of the definitions, as it pertains to morality, "conduct that conforms to an accepted standard of right and wrong." When people usually refer to someone's character, they might say they are of sound character or of good character, but either way, it is typically referred to in a positive manner. This is why the motto of the community is in fact, "Where Character Counts." Synonyms and other words include morality, integrity, virtue, goodness, and honesty. Another definition, as it pertains to reputation, "the overall quality as seen or judged by people in general." The second definition is why I'm speaking today. The recent actions of this board have been absolutely disgusting. The community is watching and understands what is going on here. You collectively continue to take the path of dishonesty and deceit. Your actions since the election have been shameful, and this community deserves better. The character of this sitting board needs a lot of work. Hold public interviews to fill the vacancies as has been done before in the past. Your lack of transparency is truly disappointing. Thank you.
Stephanie Jamison on resignation and appointment.
I took today off from work to spend time with my family. I don't know about you, but I only get about three weeks of vacation, so each day of vacation really matters to me. Shame on all of you. So instead of baking pies and maybe watching some movies with my family, I'm here today, and I'm really angry. And I have to say, I have spent so much of my personal time over the last five years dealing with you, I'm disgusted. But first, I do wanna say that I'm very sorry to learn that Mr. Braccio is leaving the board, and I thank him for his service. I've met him on several occasions, he is a kind man, and he has served this board well. I just wanna say that there, this past week has been utterly shameful. First, you tried to push through two new terrible policies, thinking that the community wouldn't be paying any attention. Now you're filling a vacancy with very little opportunity to gather community feedback or consider alternate applicants. We still don't even know who you plan to put on there. So let's be clear, this is a perfect example of why change is needed on this board, and this community made it very clear that we want change. Every other district in this area follows an open and transparent process for filling vacancies, except ours. Table these resignations and appointments and initiate a public process to fill the vacancy with input from the four duly-elected board members who will be sworn in on December 1st. School boards are supposed to be nonpartisan. We all know those days are way in the past, but we could take a step today towards a more balanced, nonpartisan board, if only you have the courage to do so.
Aaron Moyer on multiple resignations and public notice.
My name is Aaron Moyer from Upper Salford Township. I rise today to object to the proper, uh, notice that was given today. Uh, the notice that was given for public meeting indicated that there would only be one resignation, uh, so I object that it's improper, there's more, uh, more on the, the agenda items today than was in the public notice. Um, also, to the extent that there was an agenda put out, uh, within required notice periods, uh, that doesn't cure the deficiency because the public notice not only indicated there was only one resignation, but said that no other business would be transacted. So, in my view, it's not proper notice and should be adjourned until next week.
Bennett Brighamon on vacant seat.
My name is Bennett Brighamon, and I live in Franconia Township, also Peter Becker Community. Uh, the eloquent speakers that preceded me took everything that I was going to say. So, I would just like to, uh, address all the board members on the topic of filling a vacancy, shame. On the topic of proposed policy 11.1, shame. On the topic of policy 11.2, shame. And if I could summarize for my two minutes and 13 seconds, I would like to say, shame, 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 shame.
Okay, we're gonna go to a recess. Getting back into order.
At this time, uh, the gentleman that was speaking prior to you, uh, recessing in the middle of his comment, uh, does have a minute 34 seconds, and you should be allowed to continue speaking.
Ladies and gentlemen, I would like to relinquish my minute and 34 seconds. Thank you. Carl Moyer on support for current board.
Guess I'm the oddball here, but, uh, I'm Carl Moyer from Telford Borough, and, uh, I just want to let the board know, I think, over the past 20 years, you've done a good job. You all have been here 20 years, I have been, but that's okay. I had eight grandkids go through to school, still one here, and it's been very well done, okay? So, uh, I also understand why I think you're pushing to get this thing done today, from my understanding, okay? And it's limited. Uh, I've never been to a school board meeting, it's the first time ever, so bear with me. But, my understanding is, if you don't do it before December 1st, you're gonna have a 4-4 tie, which could drive into the courts. Well, honestly, I've been around long enough, we have enough left, with, left-wing judges in there, and if a judge proves, a judge appoints his position, it's not gonna go very well, so. I understand why you would do this, just to keep things the way they should be, but, uh, I'm glad you all appreciate that. Thank you very much, okay? So, board, thanks a lot for your job, it's a tough job, but stay with it. Thank you.
Thank you, Peter County. We have Deborah Hecker on appointment of new member. Deborah Hecker.
I've been a resident of this school district, this township, for over 40 years, and I am appalled at what this school board is doing right now. I've had three children go to school, they've become successful adults, I now have grandchildren going to this school, and I am concerned. This is, to me, this appointment with an outgoing board just days away from the end of your term is appalling. I think it is time to let the new board come in. Our district has spoken on who they want to be overseeing our district, where character is supposed to count.
Amanda Hecker on, uh, school board.
As my wife said, we've had our children grow up through here, through school, we have grandchildren now, and it seems to me that when you raise a child, you, they come up against a, a rule they don't like, or a situation they don't like, you just say, you know, tell them, do the right thing. You know, don't worry about what's good for you, if it's good, or it's bad, do the right thing. The, the, uh, community spoke in the last election about who we want to be in charge of this school district. As far as I know, at least temporarily, we still have a democratic process here, so I would ask the board, do the right thing. When you are alone and you're thinking about, looking at what you, what you do, was it right or wrong, ask yourself, did I do the right thing? And don't, just cause you can get away with something, doesn't make it right. So I encourage you, please, ask yourself if this is the right thing for the school district, not what's best for you. Thank you.
Victor Verbeck on legality of appointment and selfless service.
Good afternoon, board members, ladies and gentlemen, my name is Victor Verbeck, I live in Lower Salford. Twenty years ago, I was on that board, and nothing like this happened. Twenty years ago, Mr. Nelson, you appeared in front of me twice for interviews and to be heard and submit your resume, and you gave your presentation. Twice, of what Corinne talked about, I was up there. That was the process, that was the procedure, yet you choose to disregard it. I join in the objection by the first Mr. Moyer, under, uh, the Sunshine Act, Section 701, um, 701(c). It is my opinion that this meeting was called for improper purpose and is a form of subterfuge under the provisions of Section 315 regarding vacancy in the Sunshine Act. The intent and spirit of the act and the Satterton Code 004 is to put into place a person who is not on the current board. Policy 004 says that a board member shall not be a holder of any office or position under the government of the school district. And when you look at the agenda, Mr. Braccio will resign, Mr. Brong is resigning, and you're going to appoint to fill one vacancy, vacant seat. So, the person to be appointed, I believe, I don't know for a fact, is going to be none other than Mr. Brong, who will sit now for two extra years after announcing his retirement and getting accolades to what he was entitled to after 20 years. I sat up there with Bill Brong, he is a good man, but this is nothing more than gamesmanship for everyone who is sitting here today. And you may say you're taking, all of this may be legal according to counsel, but this scenario cries out as one where the legislature who wrote this act could not have imagined. An election is held, there are historic shift in the membership on the board, a current member wants to step down, which is his right, leaving a chair with two more years. So, let's just move another one who's a current member with only four days left in his term into that spot. That's what you're doing. And you're not filling Mr. Brong's spot, are you? Why? Because there's only four days left. So, absolutely, this is legal gymnastics, 'cause I'm a retired attorney, at its finest. And one more thing, Mr. Brong is still Mr. Brong. He may, uh, resign, and you may accept his resignation today on November 26th, but I believe he should, is not entitled to be reappointed to a position on a seat he already has on that board. I wanted to talk about the sunshine law because I reserve objections, I won't get into it today, under Section 701(c)(3), because of pre-arranged gatherings by phone, by email, or in person to have called this special, a meeting and to repair this agenda. So note my objection under the Sunshine Act for everything that happened before here. And lastly, I wrote a letter to the editor last week, it's in the Lansda Reporter, and it's about selfless service, and I thank the police officers, and the doctors, and the nurses, and the community members who come to these meetings. It's in the Lansda Reporter. Little did I know, when I wrote that last week, and it's published today, that I would have to get up here and remind each one of you that each one of you that the reason you're here is because of selfless service, not to serve a political party. You serve this community.
Mr. Verbeck.
Mr. Verbeck. I've noted the objection to the sunshine law.
Okay.
You're welcome.
Caitlin Johnson on the concern of future of SASD.
Can I start? Okay. Hi, I'm Caitlin Johnson, Sauterton Borough. I'm gonna read just what I have written here today. My name is Caitlin Johnson, and I'm a Sauterton alumni, class of 2013, a working mother of two children, and a future Sauterton area school district parent. I'm here today because my three-year-old son has autism, and I'm deeply concerned that the decision being made here today will negatively impact the future of my children's education. During my time at Sauterton, I had access to so many different opportunities, like taking ceramics class, to learning French, joining the cheerleading team, and being able to closely get to know other students with disabilities because they were included in many of our learning environments. I am so proud to be a Sauterton alumni, so much so that I decided to raise a family here with my high school sweetheart, and send our children to the same schools that we attended. Excuse me. When I graduated from Sauterton in 2013, we were ranked thirty-eighth in the state. Now, thanks to the majority of Republican leadership over the years, we are currently ranked and plummeted to seventy-eighth in the state. Our goal should be to leave, our goal in life should be to leave a better, a place better than we found it. And that's why I'm here today, advocating for children like my son, who hasn't been able to find his own voice. I stand here today, along with each of you, and I want to acknowledge the mothers in the room today who brought their children here, and are, you wanna talk about legal gymnastics, mental, physical gymnastics? So I see you all down there, taking care of your kids, and thank you for being here. In the words of one of my favorite people, Mr. Rogers, "In times of uncertainty, look for the helpers," which is each and every one of you here today. So in the spirit of gratitude for Thanksgiving tomorrow, thank you for being here, strive to make the world a better place. Sincerely, your neighbor. Thank you.
I am going to butcher this name, and I apologize in advance. First name Anna, last name Pugliese, P-U-G.
I thought you might be able to hit another Italian last name.
Thank you.
My name is Anna Pugliese. I live in Franconia Township. I just wanna call this what it is. It's a blatant attack on our democratic rights. It's a blatant attack on the free and fair election that was just held for our board members. There's no reason for you to have pushed this through early. And if the reason is because you don't want your thoughts to be challenged, that's sad and pathetic. And if you can't have your thoughts challenged, you should not be sitting there. The last person that you appointed without any public input led you guys to be a laughingstock. Due to his, due to his inability to control his emotions, he acts more like a child than an adult. Even sitting here, he could not help but snicker and whisper to his little friends, "Grow up. Grow up." I have three children who went through this district, or one who is still in the district. They all went to the Sauterton Charter School. You know why? Because it's an incredible school. It again and again has top marks across the country. It again and again is award-winning school. You guys should count yourself lucky to have such a resource here in your district to learn from, to grow with. But instead of doing that, you've decided to make them the black sheep of all of your shortfalls. It's ridiculous. You guys can't educate. When I moved into this district, I did so partially because I wanted the charter school, but also because this was a really well-ranked school district. It was run effectively. The public had input. It no longer is that. It's no longer a well-ranked school district. Our taxes are through the roof, and our education standards keep going down the hole, because you guys can't hold yourselves accountable for anything. I think that this should be delayed until the correctly elected members are in place, so that their voices can be heard, and so that the thousands of people who came out to elect them also get a say in their school board. This is not your school board. It's not yours. It's ours.
Chris Spiegel on board member.
Mr. Nelson, will you please ask Mr. Formica to just move away, that's on the desk. He's the only school board member at the board on the desk.
So, what are we gonna talk about this time? Transparency is not a luxury in public service. It is the bare minimum standard. Yet here we are again, watching this board attempt to rush through a major decision that the public has not been given a fair chance to see, understand, or participate in. Do we even know who it is? You guys are, no? Nobody has? I heard Brong.
Caitlin Durstein.
Caitlin Durstein?
It's me.
John, okay. So, let me go to the next page. Scheduling this appointment hours before Thanksgiving is not a coincidence. It's a calculated choice, designed to keep the public participation lower and scrutiny minimal. Didn't work out so well, though, did it, guys? If transparency mattered, the vote would occur after the holiday, after the public is present, and after the newly-elected directors, chosen by the voters, are sworn in. The community is delivering a pretty clear mandate for change in the recent elections. Yet the outgoing majority is now attempting to install another handpicked board member before the will of the voters can take effect. That's not government, that's a power play. Meanwhile, who do we have to vote on this year, too? I notice a lot of the people that have any prayer of being reelected have hidden. Formica, Bill, you know the community doesn't want you around. So you're not gonna be running again. So you'll vote for this. Kim, after what happened with Paul's police report and the cease and desist, you got no chance of being reelected. So they pull you out here to have you vote as well. Barnax, I don't know how you're here, but we got Flee Sac, we got Nelson, we got Andrew Lannis, three people who will not be running for election again. So guys, this is your legacy, how the community's gonna look at you. Nelson, Steve, you talked before about what the community says about you. Do you wanna go off wearing a jester's hat, or do you wanna go out having some kind of integrity? Andrew, I don't know anything about you. You seem okay. I don't know why you're trying to make the community hate you as you're on your way out, or not like you. Satanic hasn't even been here in months anymore. And Flee Sac, you know you're gone, too. So you're gonna do as much damage as you can? This is how people are gonna remember you guys in the community for the rest of your lives. I hope you can say something tonight, and I hope you can be proud of what you're gonna be doing. That's it.
Maureen Kratz on appointment.
Hi, my name's Maureen Kratz. I live in Lower Salford. I have a petition on my phone with six hundred residents signed it, asking you to delay this appointment until after the first of December. I've been copied on over a hundred emails that have been sent to you, board members, asking you to delay this until the first of December. At least fifty people have texted me and said they reached out to you and got sent into some voicemail system, never got to talk to anybody, also asking you to delay this. As you already know, I've been building a community, it's about eight hundred and fifty members strong, and it's growing every day, and all of them are asking you to wait. Just real quick, can somebody, raise your hand if you'd like them to hold off. Please. Okay, that's a pretty good number, too. So, the public is unclear, they're not silent. Three of you were voted out less than a month ago. Like, why do you have any right to have any say in who we put on this district? We didn't want you on this board originally. So my question is, why? Why are we doing this? And I will stand here for two minutes and one second and wait for somebody to answer it. Why? Why? Does anybody else wanna know why? Why are we doing this? What's the point? Please, we wanna know why. I'm sorry, I still have a minute and thirty-four seconds, right?
This is an opportunity for public comment, not for the board to respond, so please take your time to comment.
When does the board have to respond to us? Tell us why we're doing this. We have every right to know. Just pay attention to what we're asking you to do. Everyone here wants you to stop.
Ms. Kratz, are you finished with your comment?
I'm not. I still have a minute fifteen seconds left.
Well then, please continue.
And to Mr. Brong, if you guys do choose to appoint Mr. Brong, and he steps into these seats under these circumstances, I just want him to know that the spotlight comes with it. Because he was involved in the whole Saudi Gate thing, and why everybody in the community is all up in arms about the high school, because you guys don't have the time or desire to fix it for our students. So if he doesn't want to be Facebook famous like Jester Nelson is, I'm gonna suggest maybe he doesn't accept.
Richard Detweiler, Richard Detweiler on resignations.
Thank you. I did not participate in your ritual performance of the Pledge of Allegiance today, because it pains me to recite it in chorus with pretentious, unpatriotic hypocrites. And I'm referring to the board here, not the audience. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. Where are the republican values of government by representation when you so fervently cling to one-party, unrepresentative authoritarian rule? Where is the nation under God when some of your most enthusiastic cheerleaders, and perhaps some of you, are the worst subverters of religious values to political agendas, including casting aspersions, unfounded aspersions, about the integrity of the recent election? Where is the indivisibility when you put so much transparent effort into maintaining division in our community? Where is the liberty for all when you suppress or ignore community voices that you disagree with? Where is the justice for all when you reject and disparage the values of diversity, equity, and inclusion? It's been over one year since five hundred people packed an auditorium shocked to have learned the values that make Mr. Formica an unsuitable candidate to hold office as caretaker of our children's education. You all have shown your support for his offensive values by your long silence. There is good reason still for him to follow Mr. Braccio's, and now apparently Mr. Brong's suit, and resigned today, too. There's also, there's also good reason for Ms. Wheeler to resign today, for her connection to the Sauterton's strong Facebook page, which is still posting on the current board's behalf, and which you all allow to smear your opponents during the recent election campaign. Not one of you from the board or administration came to the defense of one of the district teachers that was also smeared, and which libelous post still sits with no disapproval by any of you. There is good reason for all of you to resign, to go off to your private lives, to repent, repair, and maybe restore a little of your own dignity, humanity, and good relations with your neighbors, and to restore some neighborly grace and collaborative, patriotic, and republican-democratic values and spirit to this community. Whether or not you do the right thing by resigning today, you can still call off this lame duck power grab now.
Andrew Souchet, Andrew Souchet on school board.
Good day. My name is Andrew Souchet, and I live in Franconia Township. My focus today is not on the machinations of today's agenda. Instead, I wanna share some observations about the relationship between this board and the community. And I'm speaking as someone who's been going to these meetings regularly for years. Simply put, the board's relationship with the public has grown far more adversarial than it was eight years ago.
Excuse me, sir. This portion of the public comment is limited to agenda items only.
Okay. So, this is part of the agenda item.
Okay.
Okay? Thank you very much for your time. The shift is clear that the board's behaviors, attitudes, practices, and policies, and while every example would take far more than I'm allowed, because I have to stick to the agenda, I'll discuss or mention a few examples. We have time limits now on public comments, speaker verification requirements, mandatory photo ID displays for meetings, a refusal to update the speaker list once the meeting begins, dismissive, thank you for your comments, responses from the board presidents, reluctance, and sometimes outright resistance to record meetings, inconsistent adherence to your own stated policies, extended board meeting monologues that distance rather than engage, high-interest meetings that should be held in bigger venues, because there's hundreds of people here who can't get in, are held here. All of these practices have done more to alienate the community than to support our students and strengthen our trust. And now, in the weeks following the November 2025 election, we see special meetings like this one, rushed policy adoptions, hurried appointments to outside agencies, accelerated performance reviews for the superintendent and assistant superintendent. These actions may well be legal, but they do nothing to repair the damaged relationship between the board and the community. In fact, they deepen the perception of a deep state or illuminati operating behind closed doors. I didn't come here simply to identify deficiencies. I come here to offer suggestions. So here are my suggestions for today. Do not fill these board vacancies today. Do not adopt policy drafts 011.1 and 0.1.2. Work collaboratively with the community. Explore how to open the high school haltman road gate safely and responsibly, and determine why the Pennsylvania Department of Education lists several of our schools as needing academic support, and what you plan to do about it. Happy Thanksgiving to everyone. I hope to see you on December first, and thank you. And thank you.
Scott Swindells on delaying appointment of new board member.
This time, we still don't know who you're appointing today. Some people have suggested it might be me. And if it were, I would, it could be, I know, it could be John. If it were, I would ask you not to do that. I would ask you to wait and interview candidates and follow an appropriate length of time that you should after December 1st when the board has taken their seats. As most of you in the room know, I've said nice things about the board in the past. I've publicly defended all of you but one. I've said things like, "They mean well. They want the best for our children. They just have different ideas about how to do it." They really are good builders and have a lot of construction knowledge, even if they don't know much about education. We have beautiful buildings in our district. These are all things I've said to you. You've heard me say them. And even when you couldn't figure out a hybrid model during COVID, I said, "Well, they know how to repoint those bricks at Oak Park." And when the food lines were running out every day and there was no toilet paper, hand sanitizer, or paper towels at the high school, I said, "Well, they took $1 million in Esser funds, so they must be spending it somewhere." And when the roof leaked at Valley, I remember how Donna Shuren had grilled the builders on the pitch and the slope of the roof at that one committee meeting before the renovation. So, I gave you the benefit of the doubt. It's not all your fault. And even when sports parents, friends of board members packed the room to show up to meetings and told us there would be no cost for our $5.5 million turf field, I said, "Well, the board president at the time is a baseball dad, so he just has a pet project." A lot of board members have pet projects. I said nice words about the board, even when a board member you appointed for, quote, "financial expertise" didn't know that school budgets are finalized June 30th. And even when you went years without a policy committee meeting and the community asked, "How come you're passing so many policies?" So, you held a policy meeting and Jennifer Lisa, you used Wikipedia to define the words "policy" and "committee." And I thought, "Well, maybe they just don't know how school boards are supposed to operate with the values of transparency and follow rules." Even when several of you confronted me, practically enough of you to form a quorum. Many people in the room know about this. I don't even need to go into that. But now, if you're willing to face the optics of this meeting the day before Thanksgiving to appoint board members just days before the newly-elected duly-elected members, forcing the board to pick a board member that everyone could agree on in a few days, that could work well with them for the next two years, if you're willing to once again embarrass our district like this, I have to wonder, what are you hiding that could be so much worse than all these things that I've noticed over the years? It scares me to think about that. And couple that with the two policies that you tabled for future readings. Have to be suspicious about why that has to get through. You've obviously debated this privately and determined that this is worth how terrible this makes you look. I don't know how to defend you or whatever you're hiding this time, so stop this nonsense. You still have time to come back with a reorganized board on December 4th and take this back then. Thank you for my time.
Hi, everyone. I'm Laura Zikafus from Upper Salford, and I'm very sad that I'm following Scott. Thanks for that, Scott. I would like to start by telling you all that I'm a registered independent. So, you all can hate me or you all can love me. It doesn't matter, but I'm not a part of any particular group. I have never in my life pushed the "all one-party" button. I have voted almost, until recently, almost exclusively mixed votes. So, what I am here for is, you know, not a rubber stamp. I want to make that very clear. I'm also the parent of an eight-year-old child in our district who is just starting to explore lying and hiding. And one of the things that we talk about in our house is that hiding and lying has literally never made a bad situation better, not ever once. So, take all that into consideration when I tell you that I would like to call out specifically, as many have, that this process has not been transparent. We have 30 days from the day you accept resignation, so that would be potentially today if you choose to move forward with that. We need the public votes, the discourse that happened, the respectful discourse that happened pre-2019 appointments, as others have talked about. So, I'd like to respectfully ask that be where we go today. And to my community who's here, it's wonderful that you're here. I'm so glad that you're here, that we took time out of our day making whatever it is that we're making, which is, I'm sure, delicious and better and better smelling than here. But we're here with children and babies and elderly folks, and we're here to talk about this. But I'm also going to ask and share my increasing frustration with the temperature of these meetings because we're not getting things done. Even the extended clapping that Mr. Taylor has to wait patiently for until the next person comes, love that we're showing support, but let's do it in a temperate way because hot pots boil all of the contents. And that's where we're at. So, everybody, please, let's bring it down. Let's work toward a better future. I'm speaking to the board, but I'm speaking to all of us. Let's work toward a better future for our kids, and let's do it in a productive and respectful way that we want our kids to emulate. Thank you.
Hi, there. Good afternoon. I'm going to follow your lead and also try and keep the temperature down a little bit here. I've written you many emails over the course of the last four or five years, none of which have ever gotten a response. And each and every one of them has always been about why you are bringing such shame on this district. If you love this district, I don't understand it. The person who should be resigning is sitting there, hands folded, smirking through this whole thing. Four of you were voted out, and you're going to go and you're going to vote a new board member in, rather than giving the four people who were voted in an opportunity to be part of the process. Listen, they can't hand choose their candidate, just like you won't be able to hand choose yours. But isn't that the way this is supposed to work? Isn't that what you should be giving to us as a community if you care about us, rather than calling us all in on the day before Thanksgiving with barely a quorum? It's really, really sad. You all know better, and you're going to do it. You're going to vote. Somebody in, you're going to ignore all these comments. And there's one person who's been to his first school board meeting who came up here to support you. That's really sad.
Wow, thank you. Hi, everyone. I'm going to apologize in advance for my voice. Meredith Torres, Telford Borough. I'm the parent of two children in the Souderton School District. And I feel like this is a real déjà vu moment for me today. Two and a half years ago, I stood on this very spot and asked or encouraged the board to develop a policy for appointments after we witnessed the appointment of Mr. Fermica. The solicitor and I went back and forth about, during my public comment, about how a policy of that nature just couldn't be created because it was too hard to foresee and address all the circumstances in which one may resign their seat on the board. But the interesting thing is that most local municipalities and many local school districts, including Pen Ridge, North Penn, Perk Valley, Council Rock, and Central Bucks, all have this exact type of policy in place. It's difficult to believe that the circumstances for filling a vacant seat would be so drastically different here in the Souderton School District as to make the development and implementation of such a policy impossible. I don't think you truly understand how continuing to push appointments in this manner undermines the success of the members you appoint. You could select the most qualified candidate, but if it's not done transparently and publicly, it erodes the trust that we in the district have, both in you as a body and in the candidates you choose. And let's face it, your prior track record in this department has not been that stellar. Last week, as we sat here and listened to the board celebrate the accomplishments of the departing members, it baffles me that these same board members have explicitly chosen to push this questionable appointment during school holidays and on a date and at a time inaccessible to most in the district, although high-five to everyone here today for giving your precious time to voice your concerns about this action. And a mere five days before four new members are sworn in to be their final coup de grace, why anyone would want to make this the closing chapter of their school board career is beyond me. It's like you don't even care how monumentally unscrupulous this is. So, I'll say this again this afternoon. The voters in this community have demanded transparency, accountability, and integrity from all of you. Develop a policy that addresses appointments, how you will publicize vacancies and solicit and screen candidates. Review it transparently in a public policy committee meeting. Implement it, follow it, and lead this district with the dignity and integrity that every one of our taxpayers deserves. Thank you.
Mary Beth Benner on board openings.
My name is Mary Beth Benner, and I am a resident of Franconia Township. My two daughters are graduates of Souderton Area High School. My memory goes back many years to their elementary school years at Vernfield Elementary School in which parent-teacher conferences took place during this Thanksgiving week. I remember as they began in school there and I sat and met with the teachers one-on-one or with my husband and I each year, how impressed I was with the excellence in education that my daughters were receiving, how well the teachers were focused on their learning and on each of them and their development. It saddens me to see school board meetings take place like this because the role of the school board is to empower the teachers and to support the teachers, and I want to remind you of that role. I think and urge the board to open up this process to receive candidates from the district for the upcoming board opening or openings. According to the email that we received, there would be one motion to accept a resignation, one resignation, not two. So, I think there will be one, as that is what was duly announced. You have 30 days to fill the position, and I know there are many excellent, well-educated, community-minded people who could serve well in these roles.
Hello, everybody, and thanks for being here today. Thank you to the board for your service. I appreciate people who do things for free, and you're not getting paid. You don't have to be here, so to that extent, I thank you. It is time for Thanksgiving. It is time for family, friends, and community. And thank you all, the community, for being here today because this is an important issue. The time for politics was earlier in November, and I want to point out that it's time to focus on our community. North Penn, our next-door school board, had a resignation last week, and they called out for resumes to be handed in by Monday, December 1st, I think. And then, they are all going to interview all the candidates publicly at a school board meeting on December 10th. So, to me, that there's somebody else who's doing that right now this week, and that sounds like a really fair way to do it. And somebody had mentioned in comments that if you wait for the new board members, which were elected by this community, to come in, it might be a four-to-four vote. And he was concerned that we would be political about it. But let's all get back to thinking about the kids because if it's four people who are in this side of politics and four people who are in that side of politics, you know, if they really care about the kids, you know what they're going to do? They're all going to say, "Let's agree on a compromise candidate who's not necessarily a Republican or Democrat." I heard an independent, maybe an independent, maybe a teacher, somebody who is here for the children of our community. That is what we are all here for, the best for all the kids who we all love and we all want them to do well. So, I encourage the board, I know you're going to do what you want to do, but come together, maybe four-four, get a compromise candidate. You would have to agree, so it would be somebody you would all agree on. I think that would be best for the community, and thank you for your time and your service.
I apologize about this name as well. This is Victoria Koshchenko. Hope I'm somewhat close. Thank you.
Good afternoon, and thank you to everybody for being here today. I am simply going to read the email that I sent to the board earlier this week. As the parent of two children who attend school within the district, a homeowner, an active taxpayer, a voter, and a concerned citizen, I have observed how the school district board has chosen to operate over the last five years with growing concern. Concern that the board chooses secrecy over transparency, concern that they choose loyalty over integrity, and concern that they choose politics over the education of our children. This latest decision to appoint new board members in short order with the knowledge that the board has 30 days from the resignation of an incumbent to do so during a holiday week, when I'd like to say fewer members of the community can make this meeting, though this might prove differently, and without the benefit of the newly-elected but yet to be sworn in board members' input, this has elevated my concern to new heights. As elected officials, you represent all your constituents in the district. The four newly-elected board members are already committed to that representative position and will execute against those expectations starting next Monday evening after being sworn in. It is not only fair but right that these new board members should be seated before the SASD board appoints any additional members. Choose to do the right thing for your own integrity as well as the welfare and best interests of the thousands of children in the Souderton Area School District. Delay the appointments until after Monday, December 2nd. Thank you.
Kevin Fitzgerald. Can you check to see if he's outside? Is there anybody outside? Okay, then we have A.J. Willhauer.
I'm not going to spend too much time talking up here. I think everybody's been pretty eloquent in what their expectations are and what we are urging the board to do. And I'd just like to echo the sentiment that this should be delayed. We've had new school board members that have been elected using a very sacred democratic process that should be sacred to all of us, that I'm going to call it what it is, the current board, this shameful end-around political gamesmanship is pathetic, it's weak, it's cowardly, and it's shameful. So, delay it, make the interviews public, allow for the democratic process to play out, and do the right thing. Thank you.
All right, another one. George, I apologize by your last name, Wawaki. George? George?
George Wawaki, Sauterton Borough resident. I have two kids in the district. I also have no prepared comment that could be better than anything that's been said today. I really appreciate everybody being here and the data that everybody's put out in terms of what you guys have been doing, what you haven't been doing, is all useful for, I think, the community to know where people are standing on servant, being a servant. And I think it's very clear today where the servant aspect of this job is coming from, and it's not coming from you, it's coming from the people who actually engage with their community in a neighborly way, and I think you saw it this November in the polls, and I think what you're doing is pretty atrocious. I think I should get to a point where I can Google our district's, you know, district school board and not have to come up with all kinds of really sad, disturbing situations around transparency.
Excuse me, sir, the comment period is limited to agenda items only.
So, I'm sorry, if I'm tangential, my apologies. I also echo what everybody had said regarding the, you know, the lack of transparency in your most recent policies. I urge you to push the vote to another day.
Sorry, this is the first time for me. Can you tell me when it starts? Okay, okay, great. I have three minutes. Okay, great. First, I wanted to say, I wanted to honor our board, bless you and honor you for your time and dedication that you voluntarily have given, so thank you. I want to say, character does count, and as a parent in our community, people who want to live peaceful lives honoring one another. To my understanding, this appointment is consistent and according to our school district bylaws. As a citizen of the United States, resident of Sauterton School District, I would like to give voice to the residents in our school district who couldn't be here today. With due respect, Montgomery County residents did vote during the election two years ago. The people of Sauterton School District voted for a Republican board member. I heard that. Yep, I would like that time back on my counter. They too had made steps to have their voice be heard and counted. I thank you for honoring them. They voted for a Republican school board member. Thank you for honoring Montgomery County voters two years ago. Their voice matters. They voted, it's legal and in accordance with our voting laws. This is bylaws, this is according to the bylaws, so is this consistent and in accordance with the bylaws of Sauterton School District Board of this vote? Yes, yes, it is. Okay, thank you for doing the right thing.
Mr. Nelson, that is all the public comment.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Taylor. We're going to move on to subject item 3.1. Do I have a motion to accept the resignation of Nicholas Paratchia from the Board of School Directors effective immediately?
Motion.
We are second. Any comments or questions? All in favor?
Mr. Nelson, we're going to do roll call votes for these agenda items today. Mr. Barnaz. Ms. Blizak.
Yes.
Mr. Fermica.
Yes.
Mr. Landis.
Yes.
Ms. Wheeler.
Yes.
Mr. Nelson.
Yes.
And the motion passes.
Okay, we're going to move on to subject item 3.2, motion to accept resignation of William Bronn from the school board, School Board of School Directors. Motion.
We object to whether this was illegal.
It is noted, it's already noted, sir.
So you're saying it's illegal?
So when you note, when you, you want to explain what it is.
So we are noting your objection for the record at this point. We acknowledge your objection for the record, thank you.
This is going to be another law. Too long than we wanted. So, excuse me, we have one person objected. Everybody else needs to just let our attorney handle it and make the discuss, or discuss between the two, no one else.
This is not something that I'm going to engage in with you right now. We've heard your public comment. I understand your objection. The objection is being made and part of the record, and the board has considered it. Thank you.
Do I hear a motion?
Your second is legal.
So I have a motion.
So if you turn this case, are you saying what you're doing?
I have a second. This is Fermica. Any comments or questions? Roll call.
All right, Mr. Barnaz. Ms. Blizak.
Yes.
Mr. Fermica.
Yes.
Mr. Landis.
Yes.
Ms. Wheeler.
Yes.
And Mr. Nelson.
Yes.
And the motion passes.
Okay, now subject. Illegal. 3.3, appointment fulfilled, vacancy.
Mr. Fermica has seconded the motion. Any, any?
Excuse me, excuse me.
Excuse me.
Excuse me, excuse me.
This is an end-around on the voting.
Excuse me.
Just.
This is an obvious end-around on the voting. It's unconstitutional.
Okay.
It's illegal.
We've had your comments, we've had, excuse me. You've had, you both, you all, you have all had comments on the agenda.
No, there's no, no public celebration whatsoever, which is.
You don't need. Let our attorneys, let our attorneys speak.
She's not going to say anything.
She's not going to say anything until you be quiet.
The board does not need to identify on the agenda who they are nominating.
How do we get public comments, sorry?
They need to deliberate.
Paul, there are no public comments available on this.
Is there an objection that should be part of the record?
Okay, we have one.
I want to note that for the record. Do we have that? Mr. Taylor.
The objection is illegal.
Thank you.
Okay, we have, we have.
My objection is the Sunshine Act, Victor Verbet, Brian Chappala-Telford.
Thank you. Thank you. I, I want to make sure, I want to make sure that we have everybody's name who is joining in this objection, and it is very difficult to hear when everyone is talking at the same time.
Let's all stand up when we can. Okay.
Everybody stand up, everybody that's in charge stand up.
Chris Spiegel, Harleysville. This is illegal and preposterous, and you should be hurt by yourself, and this is a problem. I don't even have the words anymore to say. Adam Hay, Harleysville.
Thank you.
Jean Kramer-Coe, Telford.
Thank you.
Cheryl Paul, Tina, Upper Southford.
Tara, Lower Southford.
Permanent Burger.
Lower Southford.
Mary Joath, Lower Southford.
Lower Southford.
Gloria Pratt, Lower Southford.
Thank you for the name.
Frank Conian.
Kevin Ujama, Sauterton.
Lilian James, Sauterton.
Cindy Sheets, Lower Southford.
Lucky Abermann, Lower Southford.
Louise Powers, Lower Southford.
It's illegal.
We need to have a debate.
We think you have.
You know?
I have a history of this.
Richard Detlauer, former school board member.
Warren Nichols, Lower Southford.
Patricia White, Lower Southford.
Again, Victor Verbet, objection to the Sunshine Act, but also Sauterton Policy 004, which specifically states that a board member shall not be a holder of any office or position under the government of the school district. Mr. Bronn's resignation was accepted, and it took 15 seconds for you to reappoint him. That is a violation not only of the letter of the law, but the spirit of the code in anything. I've practiced law for 40 years. Never, it's never have I seen such a gamesmanship, and it's wobbles my mind. Shame.
Excuse me, excuse me, excuse me, excuse me. There are other individuals who wanted to raise their objection. You had your opportunity, Mr. Spiegel. Thank you.
Brian Chappala-Telford.
Janet Walsh, Lower Southford.
Iain Tierney, Lower Southford.
Austin Whisser, Lower Southford.
Seenan Oesten, Telford Borough.
Joel Dietrich, Lower Southford.
Deb Shum, Lower Southford.
David Annifer, Southford.
Tom Mur, Lower Southford.
Mary Tina World, Lower Southford.
John Walden Mur, Telford Borough.
Emily Willhauer, Telford Borough.
Quentin Ramsey, Lower Southford.
A.J. Willhauer, Telford Borough.
Victoria Kudryshenko, South, Lower Southford.
Mary Diana Howes, Lower Southford.
Caitlin Johnson, Sauterton.
Margaret Burke, Lower Southford.
George Wawaki, Sauterton Borough.
Travis Stevenson, Telford.
Craig Stevenson, Telford.
Meredith Torres, Telford.
Liz Berry, Harleysville.
Catherine Tyre, Upper Southford.
Samantha Brown, Central York.
Edith, Lower Southford.
Robert Murphy, Hardin, South.
Christopher Ryan, New Orleans, Lower Southford.
Patrick Kay, South Carolina.
Carrie Summers, Lower Southford.
Scott Swindell, Lower Southford.
Courtney Murphy, Black Forest.
Ernie Redd, Little Frey, Virginia County.
Anne Westbrook, Franklin County.
Alicia Abadco, Harleysville.
And Mike, Lower Southford.
Patricia Summers, Lower Southford.
Thank you.
Shouldn't you write this down?
Are you recording?
We have an idea how many people did not get to recording.
I'm going to ask.
Excuse me.
Excuse me. Excuse me. We're trying to conduct the business here. You've had an opportunity to speak. Was there anyone else who wanted to say their name?
Excuse me.
The resignation is effective immediately?
So we have, we have a motion, we have a second, we called for questions.
I want to make sure we had all of the objections. That's what I want to make sure, it's recorded. We had, as long as everyone spoke, we have the names. I want to make sure there is nobody else.
Okay.
Okay, thank you very much. So we, we had a second, now we can move on to questions or comments.
Yes, I would actually like to say something. As a board member, my name was brought up for something that I gave a wrongful cease and desist and a wrongful police report, and I would like to clarify that. Mr. Spiegel, excuse me. Oh, no, yes, I can.
You can't, not for this item. You can't. Can she say it or not? You can't say it, it's got to be on the agenda. Ms. Wheeler, stop.
Speak my time afterwards.
I, I want to, I want to clarify that this time is for all board members to raise comments or questions about this specific agenda item.
Well, this is why I am voting this way.
We can't.
No.
Okay, Mr. Taylor, roll call.
Mr. Barnaz.
Shame. Shame.
Shame.
Mr. Barnaz.
Mr. Barnaz.
Yes, we're voting yes.
Shame.
Ms. Blizak.
Ms. Blizak.
Artie Puppets.
Mr. Fermica.
Yes.
Mr. Landis.
Mr. Wheeler.
The reason I'm voting yes is because I would like someone, Mr. Spiegel, you've done enough to terrify me and my family before I called the police.
Please stop. Please, please stop.
Have you scared my child in this parking lot? Absolutely not.
Okay.
No.
I, I am.
No. Mr. Spiegel?
No.
I am voting, listen.
Ms. Wheeler, Ms. Wheeler.
I am voting yes for an experienced board member. That is why I'm voting yes, because I need someone here who's going to understand what we're going through.
Excuse me. She, she was getting to it. She, just like we gave.
Excuse me, I, Ms. Wheeler, Ms. Wheeler. I don't think everybody heard you as to the last part of your comment here. Could you please repeat it?
I said I'm voting for someone who is experienced because as we are getting four new board members, I would like someone who also has experience. I've only been on this board two years. I am still learning, there is still a lot going on, and I would like to not have five brand-new board members, which is why I am voting yes for Mr. Bronn.
Thank you. So, Mr. Nelson?
Yes.
Mr. Nelson, the motion passes.
Thank you.
Do I have a motion to adjourn? Second, all in favor? Need is close. Mr. Landis.
I didn't have anything to do with you.
Ms. Wheeler.
The reason I'm voting yes is because I would like someone, Mr. Spiegel, you've done enough to terrify me and my family where I called the police.
Please stop, please, please stop.
Have you scared my child in this parking lot? Absolutely not.
Okay.
No.
I am.
No. Mr. Spiegel.
No, Kim.
I am voting, listen.
Kim, Ms. Wheeler, Ms. Wheeler.
I am voting yes for an experienced board member. That is why I'm voting yes, because I need someone here who's going to understand what we're going through.
Excuse me.
She, she was getting to it, she, just like we gave people.
Excuse me, I, Ms. Wheeler, Ms. Wheeler, Ms. Wheeler. I don't think everybody heard you as to the last part of your comment here. Could you please repeat it?
I said I'm voting for someone who is experienced, because as we are getting four new board members, I would like someone who also has experience. I've only been on this board two years. I am still learning, there is still a lot going on, and I would like to not have five brand-new board members, which is why I am voting yes for Mr. Bronn.
Thank you. So, Mr. Nelson?
Yes.
Mr. Nelson, the motion passes.
Thank you.
Do I have a motion to adjourn? Second, all in favor? Needles close.